Mr. Wilson, please call the roll.
Dr. Agress.
Present.
Mr. McGlade.
Present.
Mr. LaFurla.
Present.
Mr. Grove.
Present.
Mr. Arthur.
Present. Thank you. If you'd all please stand and join me for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we need approval of our agenda. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the agenda.
Thank you, Chris. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any changes or discussion? Nope. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The agenda is carried. Now I need approval of a minutes from the work session of October 10th and the workshop meeting of October 10th. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the minutes for the work session of October 10th and the workshop meeting of October 10th.
Thank you again, Chris. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Agress. Any discussion on the minutes? Which are electronically in our packet. Alright, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. And the minutes are carried. Now we come to the public participation portion of our meeting. And anyone who wishes to address the board may. But we had a call in early, and I assume a lot of people came in early to hear this person speak. I know I'm intrigued. So if Beth Butler would please approach the podium over there and state your name and your address. And then watch the clock, because eventually it'll have a timer. And you get five minutes.
My name is Beth Butler. I live at 3031 Avenue L. in Kieran Council Bluffs. On October 18th, the Thomas Jefferson High School Band traveled to Glenwood State Marching Band Competition. On the trip home, bus number 700 had smoke billowing out of the back end of it. The horn alarm was malfunctioning for pretty much most of the trip. As they were driving past the middle school, the high school, the horn was continuing to honk. Again, my name is Beth, and I'm here today to address concerns felt by many of the parents of the Thomas Jefferson Band and Orchestra. I come before you today to inform you of many mechanical problems that we've experienced with the Council Bluffs Community School Buses. This has been an ongoing problem for years. As a parent of three kids, who have all been part of the musical programs at the school, I've become very close to all the kids in the band and the orchestra. The music department is a family. Our motto is nobody is left, nobody walks alone. Every parent wants their child to be safe, whether it's three kids or 120 kids. The Council Bluffs Community School District busing system is not being well-maintained. The children of the Council Bluffs Community School District need to have safe and reliable transportation system that parents, staff, and our children can rely on to get us from point A to point B. In 2015 and 2016, the Show Choir and the Show Choir Band traveled to Peru, Nebraska for an annual competition. Along the way, one of the buses began to smolder black smoke, at which point the transmission blew. One of, all of the students' equipment and instruments were all evacuated and piled onto one bus for the remainder of the hour and a half trip to Peru. The safety guidelines state that a bus has a maximum capacity of 48 people on a standard-sized bus, and there are roughly over 80 students on one bus. That causes extreme, it's a safety hazard for our students. This same year, while we were traveling to Traynor, Iowa for the Iowa State Marching Band Competition, the bus was leaking antifreeze onto a parent's vehicle the entire trip. In 2016 and 2017, the marching band took two buses to Kansas City, Missouri for a competition. Upon arriving at that location, the Missouri Department of Transportation inspected the buses and found that one bus had a broken air line and the other had a broken fuel line. Drivers were then told that they had to be fixed immediately, and both the buses left the location for repair and were away for two hours. The students were not allowed to get their instruments off the buses until the repairs were completed and the buses had come back. This cost the kids over an hour of warm-up time prior to their competition, as well as leaving the kids stranded in the event of emergency. This year, we've experienced a multitude of concerns regarding the buses. On September 23rd, we traveled to Papillion La Vista South for their first competition of the season. Neither the driver knew how to get, neither driver knew how to get to the location, which caused them again to miss warm-up time. Once the kids were off the bus, both of the drivers left in one bus, stating that as long as the bus was still there, they were still going to get paid, even though they weren't at the event for the whole time. The temperature outside was almost 98 degrees with no shade, and the band director made the decision that it would be in the best interest of the students to leave. However, we had no drivers to take us home. Our director called the bus barn six times with no answer. Another teacher called and was told that the drivers were 15 minutes away. The driver showed up and approximately 30 minutes later. Some of the students boarded the bus to get out of the sun while they continued to wait for the second driver, another hour before making the 30-minute drive back to the school. The TJBOP Board decided that it was in the kids' best interest that we purchased Gatorade for the kids to keep them hydrated and to avoid heat exhaustion. On October 7th, the band traveled to Manhattan, Kansas, to the Central States Marching Festival. We left the school at 7:00 AM, and it was pouring rain most of the drive. While going through Nebraska, the white strobe light on top of the bus number 801 toppled over. It was rolling across the top of the bus for the rest of the trip. When the second set of drivers arrived, they both immediately got onto one bus and began to leave the event again. The female driver informed me that she had to take the bus to get gas, which made us parents wonder, why didn't the original bus drivers go and do that while they were waiting? At that point, the male bus driver had yelled at me. He stated that he was going to get his dinner, and there was nothing that I was going to do to stop him. I also then explained that we had ordered dinner for them. It was already paid for. At that time, I left to pick up dinner for the kids and staff, drop a parent off at her car, and that took about one hour. And they still weren't back by the time I was back. I know I'm running out of time, so I'm going to have to hand this over to somebody else.
I'll use some executive prerogative here, if that's okay. And I'll give you some more time to finish.
Okay. I'm almost done, I promise. So, in 30 minutes after I had returned, they had returned. And then they asked us for their dinners. Even though they told me they were going to get their dinners, they still asked for their dinners. Later that evening, a student went back to the bus to get personal items off the bus, at which point the male driver profanely yelled at her to get off the bus. She was getting off the bus and happened to notice that the bus driver had her personal belongings. He was sleeping on the bus with her blanket and her pillow. Both drivers were seen smoking, standing next to the buses at K-State. While driving home, it was also noted that the bus had a headlight out as well. So they could have been pulled over by Kansas DOT, or Nebraska DOT, or Iowa DOT. The treatment towards the band and the staff, by the busing staff on that trip, it was completely inexcusable. There was no need for it. I come before you today as a representative of the music department, asking that the school board help address this ongoing issue and imploring you to further investigate the maintenance of the transportation that is being provided to the students in our district. Prior to a long-distance trip, the buses should be thoroughly inspected prior to departing the bus barn to avoid any potential dangerous situations on the road. Had we gotten stuck in K-State, we could have been, had 60 kids on the side of the road for who knows how long. I'd like to know if, you know, I'm sure that you would agree that our children's safety should be of utmost importance. In cases where there's trips that are going to last more than 10 hours, is it financially feasible or safer to hire a charter bus versus taking two broken-down school buses? That's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Generally, under public participation, we don't respond. But I would say we will definitely look into this. And, I guess I'm sorry this happened. So, thank you for coming. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board? Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, we will close the public participation portion, and we will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Marillo.
Thank you, Mr. Arthur. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Or, Ms. [inaudible]. I have a college roommate that was Orlowsky, so I still haven't been able to get down.
Ostrowski, yeah.
I always want to call her by the wrong last name. She is going to present our Students and Employee of the Month.
You bet. Good evening. This is, this is always a great, a great opportunity to shine a spotlight on individuals that make up our wonderful school district. So we're going to start by highlighting some accomplishments of some of our students. We have with us two of our three members of the Iowa Youth Congress. Could I have Haley and Daniella come forward, and we will talk about you a little bit? They are representatives of the Iowa Youth Congress. Go ahead and give them a round of applause as they come up. So Thomas Jefferson High School sophomore Daniella Avalos and Abraham Lincoln Sr.'s Haley Hartman and Sidney Schilling, who's ill today, were selected for the 2018 Iowa Youth Congress. Sidney also was named the Southwest Iowa, or excuse me, Southwest Regional Officer for the Congress. Nice leadership there. The Iowa Youth Congress was created in 2006 by the Department of Human Rights and provides students of all backgrounds the opportunity to gain hands-on education in state government, democracy, advocacy, and civic engagement. Our three representatives to the Youth Congress are among a group of 100 who will participate in quarterly regional meetings throughout the year, a one-day mock Congress, and a day on the Hill. During the mock Congress, the youth members will present and vote on legislative issues believed to positively affect youth. The positions are then turned into bills to be presented to Iowa's Legislature during the Day on the Hill event. Through the Iowa Youth Congress experience, students attain a variety of skills including public speaking, problem-solving, and political debate in multicultural leadership settings. The students also report that the Congress participation improves their interest in the legislative process and helps to provide a more hands-on learning experience in the proposal, debate, and passing of bills. And we might just recruit you as our legislative advocates this year. Would that be all right? As a school district? She's like, what does that mean? Anyway, we have a former member of the Iowa Youth Congress on our school board, Mr. Kyle McGlade. So he can share with you his experience, I'm sure, as well. But Dr. Marillo and Mr. Arthur, would you join me in recognizing Ms. Haley Hartman and Ms. Danielle, Daniella Avalos as our representatives here tonight for the Iowa Youth Congress? Yes. Yes. Yes, please. Scott Hartman? And Daniella, do you have a parent here tonight as well? Okay. She's got a lot of parents here. Okay. Everybody can stand to be recognized. But Dr. Marillo, we'd like to congratulate you all as well. And if you'll, go ahead and stay tuned in the back. We're going to take some pictures after the recognition portion. Okay, so congratulations again. Okay. Alright, our next opportunity tonight is to recognize a member of the statewide youth broadband advisory council. We've never gotten to do this before. So Abraham Lincoln High School sophomore Jonathan Stiverson, would you please join me up front? And he's got his big fan club here, Dr. Marillo, tonight. Come on up, and I'll speak about you for a moment. Jonathan has been appointed as one of only 15 Iowa high school students to serve on the statewide youth broadband advisory council. The council was established by the Iowa Communications Network specifically to engage students on a variety of broadband-related topics. So throughout the school year, these broadband ambassadors will meet through video conference, of course, video conference, or something real high-tech, with the ICN executive leadership to discuss the importance of true high-speed broadband to the next generation. Last year, students discussed a range of topics, including broadband dead zones in schools, cybersecurity, coding, encrypting versus non-encrypting data, and wireless communication technology. Jonathan, we're very proud that you'll be representing Council Bluffs in our schools in Des Moines as part of the Iowa Communications Network Youth Broadband Advisory Council. Congratulations. And, and would Jonathan's parents and grandparents and fan club please stand? And thank you for your leadership. And if, Jonathan, you'll stick around for a few minutes. We'll take your picture in the back here in just a minute. Go ahead and go on back, though. Thank you. Okay. We have four staff members to recognize this evening. We are catching up on Septembers, and we also have October Employees of the Month in our Living the Mission program to be recognized tonight. So first, I would like to introduce you to our support staff member for the month of September, and that's Martha Bonine. Please join us up front, and we want to recognize and talk about you for a moment. Yeah, you might as well. You mind if talking about you for a moment? Come on over here. I am pleased to share a little more information about Martha. Her nominators shared the following, okay? Martha comes to work every single day with a smile and a positive attitude. She not only performs every task asked of her, but she takes time to build quality relationships with every student she encounters. She takes extra time to identify students who are struggling and make sure to find new and creative ways to connect with them. She's highly engaged and satisfied, and she encourages others to be engaged as well. At a recent PD session, our staff, she said, was trying to identify what percent we wanted on our HumanX survey. Through an auction-style exercise, we ended at 88%, and everyone was in agreement. However, Martha shot her hand up and proclaimed, what'd you say, "We can do 90%." So she said, "Let's do this," and the staff cheered and chills ran up and down people's bodies. She pushes us daily, she said, to do and be our best. Martha approached this nominator this summer about a vision she had for a club for Lewis &amp; Clark. It's the Hero Club. Happy explorers reaching others. She had a vision and a plan. This year, she reached out to staff, got nominations, reviewed candidates, picked the 10 explorers, and has already started meeting with the students. This club will be having a brown bag lunch with Dr. Marillo in December, so you can look forward to that. Martha's idea has engaged students in the development of their leadership skills, and this nominator cannot wait to see them grow. Martha Bonine is an extraordinary employee, and Lewis &amp; Clark is both lucky and grateful to have her. Congratulations. And she has received a gift card courtesy of our Community Education Foundation and a trophy as well to hopefully proudly display as the September Support Staff Member of the Month. Congratulations. And do you have folks here with you tonight? Yes. Yeah? And Teresa Hamilton, principal at Lewis &amp; Clark? Oh, and Cindy's hiding in the back. Cindy, okay. She's here to celebrate you as well. Okay. Deborah Robinson is our License Staff Member of the Month for September. Deborah, would you join us and allow Dr. Marillo to present you your trophy and your gift certificate from the Community Education Foundation? Congratulations. I see the photos coming here, so that's good. Alright, so I'm going to share just a little bit of information about Deb. Deb is an integral part of the Abraham Lincoln staff in the district's Career and Technical Education Department. She has taught in the Council Bluffs District for 27 years. 18 of those were with Iowa Western, and now we, we took her as our own. We borrowed her. Deb is always willing to take on any challenge that will allow her to further help our students. When the district wanted someone to get trained in the Cisco networking curriculum, she never hesitated. She took her business education background and made the connections to be able to teach an information technology program. She dedicated many summers and evenings so she could get her Cisco certification. She knew that it was important for her students to have real-life experiences, so she worked tirelessly with David Fringer, our Chief Technology Officer, to establish the Cisco Networking Academy at AL. In the academy, Deb consistently pushes her students to dig deeper to solve any issues that occur in the network. So she knows they will need these skills in any job they choose to pursue. Last year, some students wanted to participate in the Air Force Cyber Patriot Program. Again, Deb stepped up and helped the Cyber, Link's Cyber Patriots team. Through this program, she helps students learn technical skills, operating systems, teamwork collaboration, and time management. The AL team, by the way, was the top scoring team in Iowa. This past year, Deb was asked by Google to help other schools around the nation establish data center programs like the one at Abraham Lincoln. She worked tirelessly during the school year to compile the curriculum into a step-by-step curriculum as a resource that other districts could use. Google will rely on her to conduct professional development on the curriculum for teachers around the nation. That's pretty impressive, and thanks for helping to shine a spotlight on everything happening in Council Bluffs, due in part to your leadership. Congratulations. And Deb has folks here to support her, too. Her husband and Kyle Forni from the Tucker Career Center. And your parents. Oh, wonderful. Allow Dr. Marillo to greet you, please. Can you take more good stuff? Because I've got two more awesome people to introduce to you. Okay. Trying to talk fast, but boy, there's a lot of good things to say. So Emily Hummel is our Support Staff Member for October. Emily, representing Edison Elementary, would you come forward, please, and let us celebrate you? Edison, Emily, excuse me, is the Administrative Assistant at Edison Elementary, and she has some great things that her nominator shared about her. So I'm going to read those briefly. Emily became our Edison Secretary this past spring after serving in the Health Associate role for almost nine years. "In all my years," the nominator said, "I have never encountered someone quite like Emily." "Since her start, she has single-handedly created our staff website with daily updates and links for teachers to access. She reorganized our back-to-school night and made it more organized and efficient for families. It was the smoothest back-to-school night ever. She spent countless hours getting paperwork done and contacting many parents to get students ready for school. Not only has she done an amazing job as school secretary, but she has taken on health office duties as needed," because you know how to do that stuff, too. This nominee said our staff and students are very grateful to Emily Hummel. And congratulations to you, and I know your parents and others are here to support you tonight. Congratulations. And thanks to Principal Mike Notton for being here to celebrate her as well. Alright. Our License Staff Member of the Month for October is Donnette Bastian. Donnette, would you please join us to celebrate you? Donnette Bastian has been with the district since 1991 and has served as a teacher, principal, tech strategist, and currently is a full-time counselor at Longfellow. Donnette is a true team member. She has worked hard to make students' basics need, to make sure students' basic needs are met by organizing coat drives and boot drives for the past several years. She also started a hygiene pantry in her office so that any student who needs hygiene items, such as deodorant or soap, can come and get it. She has a food pantry as well. Evidence of Donnette's drive and ambition to improve teaching and learning at Longfellow is her commitment to our district's behavior model using instructional discipline. She wrote and received a community foundation grant and received iPad minis for the students she sees in individual counseling as a means to motivate students to take charge of their own behavior. Donnette knows all the students in our building, and the students love to spend time with her. She's highly skilled at resolving conflicts in a fair manner. She's sensitive and caring when working with staff and students. Donnette has boundless energy working in this before-and-after-school club programs, providing activities to build relations with students and keep students interested in coming to school every day. Mrs. Bastian teaches students that learning can be fun, and no doubt when you hear this. She taught a physical activity club, a baton club, sewing club, board game club. That's fun. And she's inspired students to be more active and to help others. She now has a morning club, a pom-pom club, and a movie club. Who wants to go and be part of these clubs? Me. And we have to share some of the quotes from students that show how much they love her. Are you ready? "Mrs. Bastian has put a lot of time into our clubs and our schools. She really helps us out," said Alex. "Mrs. Bastian has always been an awesome counselor and has many clubs to take care of. She spends all of her time just to make us happy," said Ben. "She is very kind and, a very kind and caring person. She helps if someone needs her, and she is always helping other people no matter what," said Leila. "Mrs. Bastian deserves recognition for all of her efforts in teaching students and staff what it means to care for others and spring into action where help is needed." Congratulations to you, and thanks to her supporters here tonight, including Principal Gary Milborn and others, I'm sure. Your father is here. Wonderful. Congratulations. And I invite all of our honorees tonight to join us in the back, and we're going to take a couple of pictures. Try, would you, Mr. Arthur, would you join us? That way you don't start the meeting without us.
Well, I will say this.
I think she'll come home Thursday.
I like Bush, but he was not a very good leader. He did things that, he and Martha just buttered each other constantly. And I think the truth was somewhere in the middle, so she was saying that he could never spend enough money. He said that she spent too much money. I think he could have loosened up the first strings, not as much as Martha wants to. But he was overly cautious with the money in some cases.
Well, I don't know enough about the fight. Yeah, I looked at their 990. If you, by the way, if you ever want to go over the 990, I can sit down with you. Because I used to prepare those all the time. But they have a lot of, they have several million dollars in investments. So, not that, they can say, okay, well, here's a million bucks, but... We would get, we would get these, like, we'd ask them for like $150 to sponsor a phone. $150? You gotta be begging, man.
Yeah, I guess that's the thing I was.
At Acton, Johnson School District candidate. That's where our daughter moved to.
Oh, no.
Some of her friends' parents got messages. Mommy got killed.
Some of her friends' parents got messages that Mommy got killed. Want to be between here and there. This must be too much money. We don't have enough money. Yeah? Yeah, I'm going to need some help. Proud to whittle down. Or she talks about three years.
All right. Welcome back to the regular board meeting of the Council Bluffs Community Schools. We will start with our resolution portion of the meeting. First up is a request for modified supplemental amount for open enrollment out and LEP students serve beyond four years. Who would like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the request for additional funding, modified, what's the word? Supplemental amount for open enrollment.
Second. Do we also need to have that be for the LEP? Just question. So can I have a?
That should be added to the motion, yes, the LEP students.
Okay.
Yeah. It's all one motion.
Okay. Very good. And we had a first and a second. Any discussion on this matter? All right, to Mr. Wilson. So we, Mr. Wilson, we're going to do a voice count, voice roll call, and also an electronic one.
Yeah, so I'm going to call your name if you just click your vote.
I do that.
How do you do that?
It'll pop up.
It'll pop up, huh? Oh.
You see it there?
Not yet.
Did it pop up?
It takes a while. This is the exciting portion of moving called technology.
What's supposed to pop up there? A little icon?
Okay. So, Mr. Wilson.
I'll just call the vote, how's that?
Call the vote.
Okay, Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
And Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the motion is carried. Now we have approval of our 2017-2018 early notification incentive. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the 2017-2018 early notification incentive as presented.
Thank you, Chris. Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion on this matter?
In the past, haven't we had a limit on how many can do this? And we're taking that a lot of. I didn't see it on these eligibility guidelines. Maybe that's what we want to do, I don't know.
It does reserve the right for us to, to limit it in, in the eligibility requirements. But typically in the PAT, last year we had less than ten that made themselves available for this.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think you're right. Typically, we've had this be like twenty or so, number fifteen to twenty.
Different items. So those were early severance programs that we did last year, the last two years, that were paid for those people who met certain, closer to retirement-type qualifications, that we would give them that incentive to move over to IPRs. Where this is for anybody who's leaving the district that meets those eligibility requirements, our certified staff administrators or nurses that has been at least an employee for a minimum of three years, so that we can get in the process of planning to refill those positions for the following school years.
Earlier. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, Dean, please call the roll, which I see you did.
You should see your online voting up there now. So, Mr. LaFurla?
Yeah, there it is.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
And Mr. Arthur?
Yes. And the motion is carried. Now we have approval of a policy review list for 2017 and 2018. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the 2017-2018 policy review list as presented.
Second.
Okay. And the list is attached there. Is there any discussion or questions?
Do we do this every year? We have, we have to review the list of policies for approval?
Okay. It's an exciting part of board governance. If there's no discussion, then Dean, please call the roll.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
And Mr. Arthur?
Yes. And the policy review list is approved. Now we have a resolution directing sale of 2017B bonds. And is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the Board of Education direct the sale to American National Bank of six million five hundred eighty-eight dollars, school infrastructure bonds sales, sorry, school infrastructure sales service and use tax refunding bonds, series 2017B.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion on this? Eighty-eight thousand. Little more.
What did I?
Said dollars. This, for the public at home, this is, we're going to reduce, we're able to reduce to a rate of two point one nine.
Correct.
On these, which was the low bid going to American National, so.
Correct.
It's a heck of a rate to do our long-term debt. Dean, please call the roll.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes. And the motion is carried. Now we have a redemption of 2012 bonds. Is there a motion?
I'll move that the board authorize, authorize the redemption of outstanding school infrastructure sales service and tax, use tax revenue bonds of the Council Bluffs Community School District, state of Iowa, dated March first, 2012, and directing notice be given.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? These bonds had interest rates between two and three percent. The savings is about three hundred and fifty thousand or so. Okay. If there's no discussion, Dean, please call the roll.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes. And the motion to redeem those bonds is carried. Now we're on our consent agenda. In that consent agenda, we have a number of items. Special education contracts, claims and accounts, personal agenda, financial reports, P-card transactions, checks, and ACH payments. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Excellent. Any discussion on these? I don't know, I actually talked through some of these a little bit earlier. All right. Mr. Wilson?
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
And Mr. Arthur?
Yes. And the motion is carried. And somehow, in thirty-eight minutes, we are adjourned.